Y'all ready?
Okay.
Okay, Martin.
Mark has done an excellent job of reporting on the meetings that we had where he's been in attendance. And probably you all read about what's transpired in the newspaper. But we went and met with the commissioners and they were very cooperative. They proposed to share in the cost of building the water tower. I assume that means 50%. But no figure really was, because we don't know the cost yet totally. They were sensitive to the fact that we didn't have a ready source of revenue or money to pay for the other half. So they said if we could borrow the funds, they would make the debt service for however long it took. The capital improvement, certificates of participation that are being paid for from the capital improvement sales tax will be retired in 2023. So it's like, I'm sorry, it's seven years, 2025. At that point, the money that we're using to pay those bond payments or certificate payments would be available for us to do whatever and we could take over and make debt service. Right now, that fund is generating, when they set it up, they assumed a certain level of sales taxes would be received and structured the bond issue so that it would match the anticipated revenues from the tax. Well, revenues are doing a little bit better than it cost us. So we're able to kind of look forward to maybe being able to take the county out before the full seven-year period.
Didn't we drop off a couple of years when we refinanced? I thought we dropped off a couple of years. I thought it was originally 2025 I thought it was.
Sue said it was 2025.
Okay.
We dropped the interest rate.
Regardless, whatever it is, the principle's the same.
Then we met with a financial institution who said that if we wanted to do a, build leaseback situation, that they would be interested in participating. And they're going to send me a proposal. I haven't received that yet because we had to send them three years financial statements. Basically, the financial institution owns the tower for the period of the debt and then we lease it back from them and we make a lease payment to them, which is retiring and amortized, an amortization of the loan. So I don't know the interest rate, but I told them 15 years. So we'll see what happens with that. There was one other issue here. Oh, no, the other issue is I've taken the liberty of sending out requests for qualifications for engineering. And so those will be coming in in a couple of weeks. And we'll be able to select, I sent it to advertise it and send it to four firms that we have worked with in the past and that we have good relationships with. And we'll see which of those gives us the best proposal. Since the county and the bank are going to be participating, I want to kind of make them part of the selection process on selecting the engineer. We expect it to be less than the preliminary estimate that we got. But it's not going to be, you know, significant, well, I may say what's significant. Instead of being a million four, it might be a million. And that is significant.
Yeah.
But we're hoping it can come in under a million. We're looking at, we've had a long discussion, Steve was there, about the size of the tank. So we're looking at 100, what do we, 300,000 gallon tank, which is large enough to accommodate any future use of the property.
We're comfortable with that.
Are the fire department comfortable with that? I had spoken with Kenny and he was kind of telling me how much water the tank can go through, trucks can go through, if there's a big incident. They can go through water pretty quick.
I haven't consulted with him, but...
Not only would it be 300,000 gallons in the tank, we would also have the water plant supplying 1,000 gallons a minute and boosting pressure as well at that point.
That's really going to help progress, Clark, right? Because I know we've been draining out there and it was like, didn't have the fresh. Do they have like Sabrots, you know, dollar gallons, gallons of it?
So that's kind of the progress and I think there's, I always get nervous until the details are agreed to. You know where the devil resides. And so I'm anxious to get kind of the things that are in principle agreed to tied down so the details are agreed to and there's nothing, no surprises out there.
Well, I want to commend those involved in that. That's a significant improvement over, I think, where we were. I like the sound of that plan much better than...
Martin, there was two questions kind of came to mind. There's one, what actually was the county offering to pay just the interest on the loan for five years or were they actually...
No, they'll pay the debt service, interest and principal.
They'll pay the payment and...
We'll do an interest only during the construction period.
Right.
And then when we know what, you know, and we'll get authorized up to, say, a million dollars. And as we make our progress payments, you know, we'll be drawing against basically like a letter of credit works.
Right.
And they'll charge us for whatever dollar amount on a monthly basis we've drawn down. Then at the end, they'll convert it to a full amortization and then we'll be paying principal and interest for the balance of the note. And the county, from what I heard, the county said, "We'll cover you."
Well...
And I think that that's the principle in interest payment.
Right. I'd like to know for sure.
Well, and that's where we got to hammer all the details.
They're going to commit to a dollar amount, you know, that they're going to pay towards the cost of doing it. And they will be making payments and whether they want to, you know, have the money to put it up front so we borrow less, or whether they want to be in a position where we fund the whole thing through the lease payment and they don't have any capital outlay and then they're making the payments up to the amount that they committed to pay. And then they'll continue to make payments. That would be recapturable once we're in a position to take it over.
So after that or during that period of time, you know, what are we going to have to do for them for water rates?
We hadn't discussed it. I think if we forgive water rates, then we can. We're making a contribution to paying them back for whatever we owe.
Because I think our preliminary from Steve was, you know, we would be charging them about $13,000 a year for water.
We could definitely work with rates as a part of the payback scheme. And that would be advisable because, you know, it's kind of money we don't have now.
Right.
So it shouldn't affect our operations and it would be a way to do it painlessly, pay them back. Any other questions? Okay. We submitted, as was my report, a application for a permit from MoDOT and they'll give it to us because it came from MoDOT. So we know they're going to sign off on it when we send it in. This requires some engineering work because it's going to flirt with the gas company and it's going to have to cut and fill quantities and it's got to be done, you know, surveying crew's going to have to get out there and do the surveying. And I am basically asking the question if you're ready for me to proceed on that. I don't, I can't tell you what the cost is because it hasn't been designed yet.
I am.
Yeah, I know you are. And then the funding of it would come out of the capital improvement balance that we've talked about.
Well, it needs to be done.
Oh, yeah.
And there's still some left from the special...
75,000.
75,000 from the special...
Special Roads is there too. So there's going to be, I'm talking to Paul Arnold, there's the fill, there's the, that's going to be, I think, I think it's, you know, doable.
And we're still, I'm sorry.
Boy, I'm sorry, you go ahead.
I just had a question that, and this still is including sort of reorientating that angle of approach so it's not...
Yes.
So it's a little more of a nine...
But it's not the more ambitious approach of routing it through the adjacent property, owner of the property.
Right, right.
Because we can't buy his property and nobody else, that didn't happen.
Right.
But if it did, that'd be a great way to go.
Right.
And then I was planning, since we'll be selecting an engineer already on a competitive basis for the water tower, we can just have them do that work.
Well, it should make that intersection a lot safer because it's fairly treacherous right now.
It is, and I mean, in two respects. One is the alignment and the other is the grade at the intersection. So those two things...
Is that why I'm the only one with trucks going up and down there? They're going into the back of the nursing home for deliveries also. But how far down Chadwell is any improvements going to come?
It's part of, kind of, part of the surveying work.
Well, it needs to go away to bridge. We can do that because that's...
Well, that's just, once we get, yeah, but the intent of the filling and changing the grade, I mean, if you want to go ahead and just overlay it all the way to the bridge.
Yeah, I think that's, we need to do that.
Yeah.
The original time they state looked at it, they had painted lines on the thing and it goes down to about where the speed limit sign is, right past...
I've actually got a drawing I can look at.
That's as far back as they were writing on needed to adjust the grade. I don't know if the marks are still there, but it's about where that speed limit sign is.
But I mean, on down the road, I mean, in that curve and stuff, if you've ever come up through there and some of the kids are coming out of school and stuff. And, you know, and there's such a drop off in the pavement several spots up through there. I mean, I haven't done it, but I know people that's went up through there and groin rims and tires and...
Yeah. It's happened several times, but...
I know a lot of them.
Well, gosh. Tim, go ahead.
No, I just said something on something else.
Okay, go ahead.
That, because it's been brought up and since Steve's here, you know, we're talking about storage on water that came back that we were shortage of storage. Steve is, if it's just strictly storage, what about Blaine Street? I mean, it's sitting there empty.
As far as...
Yeah, I mean, if we're just short, if the state's saying that we're, you know, on the borderline of not having enough water storage, can't you fill Blaine Street?
We could, I mean, it's not going to benefit Progress Parkway.
No, I know, but the overall, wasn't it that the city was short on storage and that's...
Yeah. Honestly, I don't know why it takes that much time. I'm really into that.
Your boss was.
Yeah. I mean, if, we're still maintaining it, right? And it's empty.
Yeah, it's empty, maintained and sealed.
So if we're worried about storage, isn't it 250,000, something like that?
Yeah, 270,000. Yeah, I can look into that.
Or something with valves and stuff, I remember, but, and that was something to do with Mississippi Lime and all of that, but if it's just storage and can be in the system... Yeah.
There was something down in the street, remember that?
Yeah, there is something.
The street was closed for a while because they were doing a lot of work in the street, some kind of valve. I wonder if Wood was still here though, I think. Pretty sure. Been a wash there.
Yeah.
Well, I kind of expected a little more conversation on these items, so we're...
[laughing]
I think we're constrained from bringing up other issues since they weren't on the list, right, Mark?
That is correct.
And so you got about 15 minutes to...
Well, the width of Chadwell Lane, I mean, is that the same as any street in town? It's just as wide as the pavement?
Um...
For the black brush lane alongside the road dead trees and...
I suspect Chadwell Lane, yes. I mean, there are roads where there was a dedicated right of way when the subdivision plat was created. So the roads that we have don't take up the whole right of way. There are other roads where the corner of the property is out in the middle of the road and we have an easement. Although there are no recorded easements, they are prescriptive because it's always been that way. Then there are roads where the property lines stop, but it's right at the edge of the road and so I, I'd have to look, do some research and figure out which one of those Chadwell Lane is. I think it's safe to say Chadwell Lane is not a deeded or indebted, established right of way. Because we don't have a recorded subdivision for that area.
So you'd have to get like to clear out, because there is like up where the nursing home is, they push some trees down and it's right on the road. And I take it that's nursing home property there where the trees could be removed to, you know, because there's trees growing over the road down there. But you see where Donzies live, they got a nice path where they've been mowing 10 feet out from the road, you know, that keep things back off of the road.
It'd be nice clearing all of that out.
Yeah, just for sightline.
Yeah, sightline too. Well, it's so dark down in there too at night, you know, and coming down at the bottom.
The only ones that might object to that, you know, the ones on the south side that live, Roger's subdivision there, who probably liked the trees because they insulate them from Chadwell Lane, their backyard.
More on the other side of the road is where the stuff's all laying down, but...
Right.
I bet you could talk to the nursing home, they'd probably let us...
Sure, they wouldn't care.
Yeah. Clean that all up.
That'd be good.
It's what they did down there at the bottom next to the bridge where they cleaned that ditch and stuff out, might help some. There's water really pools up there where the road's falling apart.
Yeah.
Okay, so when I get to Chadwell Lane, the project will include not just, only the intersection changes in the grading, but also an overlay of the rest of the road?
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, because that bottom really is, it does work as a speed bump for the kids coming through there though.
Well, that's always, there's two sides to road improvements. Sometimes you create a raceway.
Yeah.
Okay, well, unless somebody else has something to say about the items on the agenda, then we'll end the work session and wait for the six o'clock regular meeting.
... one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do you have a roll call?
Mayor Hasler.
Here.
Alderman Grimminger.
Here.
Alderman Noonie.
Here.
Alderman Donovan.
Here.
Alderman Jokers.
Here.
Alderman Hook. Alderman Stupi.
Here.
Alderman Prince.
Here.
Alderman Rosika.
Here.
Mayor, we have a quorum.
Very good. Motion approval of our agenda.
Prove.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Takes us down to personal appearance. Tracy, you're up. Thank you for coming tonight.
Thank you for allowing me to speak. Good evening, everyone. Thank you for the opportunity to speak with you today. I have lived at seven eighty Point Base for the last eighteen years. On February twenty-fourth, after several days of heavy rains, I found backup from the city sewer coming in through my basement drain. It was small when I caught it. There was clearly evidence that it was from the sewer system. I inserted a plug into the hole to stop it. Within a few hours, there was at least two inches of liquid in my basement. I had the plug and I knew what to do because it was not the first time this has happened. In fact, it's the third time in the last six years. Last summer, I spent a considerable amount of money working to waterproof my basement. I thought some of the problem was at least on my end. I had a contractor install a sump pump. We applied some tar. But I can only fix so many things on my end. Every time the city's system backs up, I lose property and a deductible of a thousand dollars. Both the mayor and the city administrator are somewhat familiar with this situation. The mayor actually came to my home. He was very helpful, and I appreciate that. I spoke with Steve Wilson about the situation as well, and they both seemed surprised that I had any problems. If it were an isolated incident, I would also be surprised. I did reach out to both of the aldermen for Ward Three, and I heard back from Alderman Stupi. Everyone was sympathetic, but consistently, nobody expressed any information that they knew about the situation. And that's why I'm here today. We need to make sure that everyone knows there's a problem in our city with our storm sewage system. You see, back in about two thousand three was the first time I experienced the problem. It was way more severe, with a loss of about twenty thousand dollars. A few years later, when I became an alderman, I probably should have been really surprised that I didn't know one of the neighbors that was affected in that incident, Vicki Winston, had been experiencing problems since nineteen seventy-seven. I really didn't have a lot of other issues until twenty fifteen, when I noticed water coming in through the drain, and I was unable to stop it. I called City Hall to see what could be done, and the response I got was, "It's been raining hard for a week. What do you expect us to do about it?" So I filed a claim with my insurance, and I paid the deductible. Another time, a few months after that, a small amount backed up into my basement. I was fortunate to be able to catch it quickly and clean it. It happened again last month, and the problem seems to be escalating. I asked to speak with you today because when I was in your seat, the city's stormwater system was not a topic of discussion. When my neighbors and I had issues, our local government seemed very surprised. Everyone I spoke with this time around was surprised. As I researched the problem some more, I found that in addition to the issues on Point Base, homeowners on Scott, Riverview, Ridgeway, Fifth Street, Seraphin, Rozier, Maxwell, Fourth Street, Market Street, and in both Saint Jude and Valley Springs have all experienced very similar situations in the last few years. As I talked with those people, the consistent response from the city is surprise and promises that they are looking into the situation and doing all that they can. I don't believe we are doing all that we can. We are allowing homeowners to sink thousands of dollars into their own property through insurance deductibles and repairs that can't fix the problem. There's a widespread problem that needs to be addressed with realistic, effective solutions. Coming home to find the stench and residue of sewage in your basement is not only disgusting and expensive, it's a health hazard. All of you were elected to serve the citizens of the city to manage the resources. It's time to address the city's outdated, ineffective, and hazardous system. As residents, we pay a monthly fee for water and sewer services, and we have no other options for this service. You accept our payments. Please also accept responsibility for making sure that the services are provided. When city residents call and ask for help, please don't answer with, "What do you expect us to do?" When I explained to the city administrator that every time this happens, I pay a deductible, his response was, "Well, you can file a claim with the city's insurance, but I can tell you how that goes." Please take a moment and think about if it were your home and your basement, and when you called for help, you could not get any results. Please imagine your high school yearbooks being lost when sewage backed up into your basement, along with your child's favorite toys. Imagine weeks of waiting for the smell of sewage to finally dissipate from your home. Imagine spending five thousand dollars in a matter of a few years to correct a problem that you cannot correct because the issue lies in the city's drainage system. I respectfully request that you personalize this issue and consider if it were your basement, your home. Please take action to help the people who elected you to represent on this board. Thank you.
Tracy, thank you.
Now...
I'm sorry, go ahead.
Well... Alliance is going to provide the smoke test, and we're gonna go over and smoke test the area to identify what that will tell us in terms of, well, you know what that tells. And we'll fix whatever that shows.
Is it going when that's gonna be done?
Steve's gonna come up to them.
Excuse me, everyone. Since I was notified by the mayor of your phone call, we have camered every line in the Point Base subdivision. We have performed smoke testing beyond the end of Bosser Drive. Next week, you guys will notice in your area that we'll be performing more smoke testing. You'll be notices on TV and on your doors when it will happen. When that happens, there'll be, you may come home to smoke in the house, smoke in the gutters, smoke in the neighborhood. It's perfectly harmless. It's non-staining, non-scent. It's just for visual effect. All the lines have been jetted. All the lines have been TV camered. We ran cameras up every single line, up to Parkwood, from the end of Saint Jude. We are looking for any possible defect in any line. We've also went around the entire neighborhood. You may have seen my guys walking around the neighborhoods, wearing green vests. They've been looking at downspouts, gutter drains, gutter tie-ins, basement stairwells that have drains in them. And we've made note of all those houses, and we're gonna contact each individual homeowner that has a defect or illegal tie-in. Anything we can do to reduce the amount of water that goes into our line, we're gonna take every action.
I take it the problem is rainwater and runoff water gets and... saturates our sewer lines?
Yes.
Okay. You know, and I've been out and been very involved in drainage and seeing what the town, the other, when we had that big rain, I was all over town looking at where water went. And I was surprised where a lot of water goes. In this town, for several years, water runs off and runs into sinkholes that take it away. You know, and if we have clogged drains, if we have clogged, I mean, we have a problem with right here on thirty-two here with poor drainage because things have been let go, you know? Poor, I won't say it's housekeeping, but letting leaves and everything. People just, we blow them out into the street, and we don't do anything with it. It causes problems in drainage, you know? It ends up at one of those drain places where it goes underground and backs up. Not saying that's the problem. It's part of the problem. And Tracy, you're right. This is everybody's problem. This is a problem that this board knows about and has inherited, and it's like every other problem we have, that somebody's got to address it and do something about it. Now, the problem we have, like everything else in Saint Genevieve is, we don't have a lot of money to do that, you know? The citizens of Saint Genevieve, I don't, I'm part owner of Saint Genevieve because I own a home on three forty-eight Academy. I'm part owner of this city, I believe. It's my responsibility. It's everybody's responsibility. It's homeowners' responsibility. It's city's responsibility. But we're not magicians. I can't, and the system is old, and it's difficult. And it's expensive to fix, you know? And I'm dealing with a homeowner with a fixed, a broken sewer line. It's expensive when we start digging, you know? But... Who's gonna pay for that? That's the biggest issue we have. Now, we are trying to identify what the problem is over there. I can't, you know, I don't know why it's here and there. I can't put my finger on that. Now, I do know something. If you live in a low-lying area, you're gonna get some water. If you live down on Second Street in Washington, it's a low-lying area, and it's just the nature of that beast. But over there, I don't quite understand that, you know? So, seems to me there would be good drainage. But your stormwater leaves your area, goes right down the street, and goes down a ditch, and it goes into the earth. It goes into the ground. There's a big grate down there. I went down through there looking at that. Sometimes we gotta, you know, and then also, everybody, the homeowners on there, "What do we do with our yard waste?" Well, hmm, we'll just dump it over the hill. Well, it ends up down into the ditch and our drainage ditch, and things get clogged, you know? So, all the way around, I think it's a big problem that we all gotta address if we're gonna fix it. And I don't have all the answers, but I'm not gonna kick the thing, the can down the road. What are we gonna do about it? How can we help? You know, I don't know what we can do, but we've got...
It's probably a combination of things, like you said, not any one thing.
Yeah, it is a combination of things. It's gonna be vents in yards. It's gonna be manholes that leak water by them. Some people in this room may have deficiencies once we perform the smoke test. And, I mean, some people might not like the answer that it has to be fixed as well, you know?
Well, Tracy mentioned one other neighbor there. Was there anyone else in that stretch that was having issues? You mentioned this is...
This time Vicki had some. The first time that we experienced it in two thousand three, there were four homes on that strip. All of us got it.
But this latest time, was this you and Vicki also?
It was just Vicki and I. Mike said he had a small amount come up, but it happens every time it rains.
It was a very small amount. Steve and Corey were over at the house, looked at it, and it only happened the last two times it rained. I didn't get any damage at all. I mean, I just had a very limited amount in my basement. I mean, five, nine, about the four neighbors. They're out there, work with armor, trying to find a solution to this problem. I appreciate that.
Now, we were contacted by Vicki Winston, I believe at seven thirty Point Base Drive, and that's when we were made aware of the situation. I was not made aware of your situation until Mayor called them.
Yes. Mr. Otto? I'm on the end of Rozier Street, so I'm not really in a low-lying area, you know? But since, and I know I've had ten people tell me it had not a darn thing to do with it, but since they redid Rozier Street, I've had water come back my drain four times, all right? And one time, if I didn't have pipes, I ephyseae female fittings into my drains. If I didn't have pipes screwed in, I would have had thirty inches of sewer water in my basement. And I just went around to the drains, and as the water leaked around the threads, I sucked it up with a vacuum cleaner and dumped it outside my basement door in a bucket that had a pump in it to pump it back outside for, until it quit raining. So we did it for fourteen hours one time, and we stuffed up like six hundred gallons of water with Chop Vax and kept running to the door with them, you know? And I can't leave my house if there's gonna be a rain, you know? I can't go somewhere. I can't go visit anybody. I gotta stay and babysit my basement if it rains because I don't wanna close the drains off unless the water backs up. But if water starts coming from somewhere else, I gotta have the drains open, you know? I don't, it's a no-win situation.
Yeah, and that's gonna be another area that we are gonna smoke test soon.
You had mentioned something about you think there's a possibility that there's a problem by Gene's oil service on it.
I don't know where the problem is, but there's, I mean, there's gotta be an inflow somewhere, and the smoke test will show that.
And that's over the weekend. Right across, right by CBS, there were some, MoDOT has some drains, you know, in the ditches that are full. On thirty-two, on that side of the street, there's ditches that the pipes are, it's all filled in, and the water can't go anywhere. And what's happening a lot of times there, and then right there is a sewer, I showed Martin, there's a sewer right there and a drain, and if it backs up, I don't know if it's leaking or sewer or not, but it's a combination of things, I think. I think we just gotta continue to move forward and be adamant about, you know, the fall of the year, we need to be out, the homeowners need to be out, the city needs to be out, cleaning drains and taking care of simple things, things that we can do.
Yeah.
I'm not saying that there's not a major problem in the sewers. We have old sewer lines in this city. They're old.
Yeah, and the manhole you're speaking of in front of Gene's there, we went and looked at that the other day as well. They do have a better manhole design, lid and frame design, that's designed to keep water out. I don't know if it's an issue or not, but we're gonna replace that one with a new lid and frame, just to be preventative.
And I've contacted MoDOT, Brian Okenfuss, and he's, I've made him aware of the situations in that area to clean. And he's told me that he's going to bring his equipment in because it's their responsibility to clean out those drains and doors all through there. He said he's gonna do it, and I'll hold him accountable to do it. Any other comments on this issue?
You will see us out there working over the next couple of weeks, trying to figure out what the problem is. And like I told you, I'm gonna keep you updated.
And I am sympathetic to your problem. I can't even imagine that. What water can do, and I'm sorry that that's happening, but I just...
I've lived through it in St. Louis County. It's not fun.
No, I know.
It's not fun.
I think every older city has a problem.
They do. You know, we're not unique in that. Doesn't make it better, but...
No.
Doesn't make it okay. No, it doesn't.
That, nobody else has anything? We'll move on. Martin, your report?
Okay. First item is the Department meeting. I apprise them of the decision of the Chamber of Commerce to get out of the fireworks business. They pledged their support and anything they could do, but they didn't think that they're capable of taking over projects like that.
That, and let me iterate on that. It's not, that doesn't have to be a chamber project. It could be a personal. If somebody wants to see that happen, we could have volunteers. We could have anybody that's gonna go out and... Dean had told me that they have a list of people that donated, and I understand that...
Oh, that's the second part of my report.
Oh, I'm sorry.
I received a call from the Chamber of Commerce, and it wasn't Dean, and it said there seems to be some misunderstanding as to what they can do. First of all, they're not doing fireworks this year. There seems to be some thought that maybe they were gonna do it one more year, but they're not doing it. And secondly, they aren't gonna make contact information available on who the donors were because they think that would be a privacy issue. But they are willing to make all of their materials available and to meet with whoever is interested in doing it about the process. Help them understand who you have to call and what arrangements have to be made. But they're loathe to release the information of the actual donors. You're all aware, we had the meeting with the Corps of Engineers. Some of you attended that meeting. The most surprising thing that came out of that meeting was an alternative for the hiking, biking trail that we thought all along was being considered somehow got kinda left out. So, the two options they proposed, there's really only one viable one, and that comes up Division Street, kind of puts the trail on half the levy. Uh, it kinda puts the trail on half the levee. They pledged however to, when they, they, they can't include the, what we thought was the Market Street option, which is where you would cross, uh, you would extend a walking trail at the end of Market Street through the field and up onto the, the levee. While they said they couldn't do kinda the, kind of analysis that was done on the other two options, that they would include it or some talk, mention of it in the report and that should funding become available, uh, or should we decide we wanted to pursue that option and get credit for it before the Corps ever got funded, that, uh, we would be able to do that, good within the content, context of the report. Uh, so they're gonna do, kinda make it possible for that to be considered, but they can't include it specifically in the report. The other thing was talked about was whether you would pave it or not pave it. It's kind of an interesting thought that I hadn't thought about. They're proposing a paved, uh, trail. And the reason is because there's an assumption that more people will use a paved trail than a unpaved trail. And, and then therefore their, their benefit calculation goes up relative to the cost. I'm not sure about the accuracy of that conclusion, but that's the premise that they're operating on. So, uh, they will be proposing a paved trail. If we decided to proceed with some trail work, uh, we would wanna put it down so that it's the proper base for some future paving that may or may not occur, uh, that meets the core standard. Uh, and can preserve the option that the money we spend doing that could be used as match against future Corps funding. So, it basically means if you're gonna do a two inch overlay or four inches of, you know, compacted rock base, we would wanna do the four inches compacted rock base. So, any questions about the Corps? So, we talked about the water tower in our, or we talked about that. I mentioned at our last meeting, uh, Industrial Development Corporation and, uh, the Chamber had organized a meeting about how to address perceived housing shortage in St. Genevieve. Uh, I made the statement to them. I told you, I said, I'm sure that if somebody came up with a proposal to use the, to do the development, that they would see, receive cooperation of the Board of Alderman in any way that we, they could to encourage capital investment. Uh, they acted on that and have found a developer they wanna bring in and have him talk about using the city's property on Progress Parkway for, uh, new housing development. So, I'll be meeting with them next week and I'll keep you informed on that. I'm gonna steal Buck's thunder. Uh, we, we, we went to the community television meeting. They had applied for a grant from the, uh, Community Foundation Fund to install additional cameras in here uh, and to buy the software to do, uh, weather alert notices and, uh, that, that grant has not been awarded. But, kinda through the grapevine, uh, we, they think, we think that, uh, that there's a chance they will be getting that grant. And I told them I would mention it because we talk a lot about they're taking the initiative and trying to find support other than just relying on the contribution the city gives them, so this is an example of, of they're doing that. We talked at our last meeting about, uh, the enforcement of the Property Maintenance Code starting next month. Uh, the city attorney advised me, uh, that we, we'd be better off doing it and starting it in April after the election because it's, could be controversial, could be kinda become a political issue and that, uh, that waiting to thirty days would be prudent. So, we're gonna put it off until after the election. The P and Z, we talked about Chadwell. So, the final thing that I wanna, uh, tell you about is, uh, Tim Good is a, uh, employee of the National Park Service who has been managing the Grant's Home property for many years. And has been really a great supporter of the National Park in St. Genevieve and, and instrumental in getting, I think, the Park Service, uh, report to be, uh, positive. And, uh, he's been reassigned, he's going to the Lincoln Home National Park and leaving St. Louis. And, uh, so, uh, the National Foundation has organized a get together, a lunch on the fourteenth at Audubon, Dutch Street. If anybody feel compelled to stop by and thank Tim for his support and efforts, uh, feel free to do so. Fourteenth at noon. And finally, uh, every year before the grass starts growing, we have to ask people to, uh, clean up the cemetery. Uh, so, uh, we're setting the deadline of the twenty-seventh of March to get memorials or any of the things that are otherwise prohibited by ordinance removed from the cemetery because if not, we'll have to remove them in order to do proper maintenance and mowing, keeping the cemetery mowed and maintained. So, again, March the twenty-seventh is kind of the deadline for anybody who, uh, has something out there that, that needs to be removed because of the, it would impede the mowing process. That's it.
Thank you, Martin. Any questions? Gary Roth? Gary will be our, he's our street superintendent, will give us his report. We all have his report, so, we have your report.
I have my report. You got any questions?
Any questions?
As you can see on there, we have been doing a lot of cleaning of ditches and, uh, storm drains. We've been, we, alliances jetted a few of them for us. Got some of their water leak patches repaired last week when it was nice. Well, you have something?
What kind of cleaning is done to attention? Is that, you gotta get in there with a machine and take it out or whatever?
Well, with, the one we cleaned out there at Progress Parkway has not been touched since I've been here. And we went in with the skid steer and the brush hog. Uh, Steve had their mini excavator out there and cleaned it up. There's not a tree left in it and...
It's a pre-dention basis and they're designed to handle all the law. It could happen in the development of Progress Parkway. So, um, and they're, and they're, it's a calculated volume. The engineer designed these things to hold a certain amount of water based on the, the hydrology for the topography. Well, if you don't maintain them, they fill up with brush and debris and trees grow in them. And whatever happens in there reduces the, the, the volume and affects the ability of the, the, the tension structure to work. So, they should've been better maintained over the years, although there wasn't much incentive to do it because they didn't have much development, but now things are happening and it's important that we, that we get them cleaned and keep them functioning properly.
And you said there was three of them?
There's three of them.
And you did all of them?
No, we got one done, the big one done.
Oh, okay. Well, proper maintenance would be just probably mowing, right?
Once you get all the debris out and you get the trees cut down that have grown up in it, it's just pretty much brush hog in it.
Right. Thank you.
Joe?
Where's Betty's field?
It's, uh, Little League Field up next, where the old tennis courts used to be.
Oh, that's what it's called?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Any other questions?
Questions, comments?
You're free to go. Carla?
Thank you.
You're up. Our community development...
Gary, you need to hang around a little bit.
I have business to take care of you.
Good evening.
Good evening, Carla.
Good evening.
So, there's, there's not much to report on here. We had, um, two certificate of appropriateness applications that were reviewed, um, I'm sorry, one that was reviewed in the February meeting and one was still left on the agenda because the owner didn't come to the February meeting, so it was postponed again to March. Other than that permits and, um, we're in the process of prioritizing the severity of the, the property maintenance houses.
Um, I guess maybe this question, I, I had one of the, uh, property owners down next to the Gack property ask what was, ask me what was happening and, and I guess his comment was, you know, if you guys, you've tried, you're trying, you're doing, but if you, if you can't do anything, just tell me that you can't do anything.
I have told him.
You, just in the last few, maybe in the last week?
Probably in the last three weeks.
Okay.
Told him that she's not coming around town, that I've tried to contact her place of employment and the addresses that we have for her, we, we can't find her. We have an address here and we have a post office box. And then there's an address that's out in the county that we can't prove that she's there.
But if, I guess Mark, if, is that the end of, is that the end? Is, unless we can find, is there anything that, that's what I think he's looking for?
I think it would've been best for him not to tell her that she had a warrant out for him, for her and that he would call the police if she showed up again. That, that probably was a tactical errand. Uh, but, uh, yeah, I mean, the city's done everything it can. I think this is the one we've talked about, there's a warrant out for her arrest, she's being prosecuted. There's only so much the municipality can do unless the city is willing to go, you know, to, to declare a dangerous building nuisance and, and then pay to clean it up, whatever the issues are, then put that as a minimum. I mean, that's really the only thing that you can do beyond what we've done. And I don't know what the circumstances, if it's even gotten that, that sort of level that it's a hazardous or dangerous building. I don't know that the, I don't know, we talked about that.
Yeah, it's not structurally...
Structurally sound or...
Well, it's, it's got holes in it and vermin come in and out of it.
It's got holes in it and there's paint falling off of it, uh, you know, and it's right in the middle of the historic district.
The peeling paint is lead, lead-based paint, so that's potential. Yeah, that's quick to...
Are we, we certain about that or do we know?
Well, we did a test.
We did a test on it.
So, uh, we can prepare a hearing for declaration of public nuisance.
And then if the city goes forward with that, then once it's declared a public nuisance, the city has to fix it.
We understand.
Okay, 'cause I think in the past we may have, it's harder to nuisance than not, not...
Not did it.
Because then, then we are, we have a certain...
It's not only the paint that's an issue on the house. I mean, there's several, there's several issues. So, it violates several aspects of the Property Maintenance Code as far as the exterior and I've not been inside, you know, inside the building, so I don't know if there's anything on the inside.
We'll be fixing the outside.
Right.
And I guess we can address drainage issues at that time, as far as adjacent property owners? If it's, if that's causing the adjacent property owners grief?
Uh, it's a, I, I don't know the answer.
Okay.
I don't know, I, I mean...
Normally, that's a private nuisance.
That, you're right. If you're talking about water runoff issues, that person has a cause of action against the delinquent property owner.
I think the lead content of the paint's kind of something. I think the fact that it's open to insects, rodents.
That's a, that's a bigger concern, yeah. It's especially not sound, but it's certainly have a...
But I don't think it has structural deficiencies. They're mostly cosmetic, uh, although inadequate.
Like I said, I've not been inside. I'd have to look at the...
I haven't either.
You have to keep in mind what the city's able to do.
Right.
So, you know, normally you're declaring something a public nuisance, it's, I mean, usually it's a, a property that had a fire and there's no insurance and so it's there and there's obvious damage to it, it's open to elements or over, you know, years and years it's just, could become dilapidated and unoccupied. And then we're either doing it ourselves or hiring a contractor to come in and bulldoze it and remove the debris. That, that's, that's the normal case for a hazardous building. The paint, I don't know, we have to, we, we, before we start the process, we have to have a plan. This is what we will do if it is declared a nuisance to fix this problem. You know, a paint issue, that's, uh, that's gonna be difficult. I don't know if the city has a plan to deal with, you know, the...
Well, I mean, one of the, one of the, one of the remedies for lead-based paint is to encapsulate it, is paint over it, hold it in place.
I like that idea.
You know, this city will be, okay.
But, I mean, you, we're talking, this is not gonna be a small by shit.
Right, yeah, that's why I'm saying, okay, you know, that's what I wanna do. I mean, you're painting somebody's house for them, you know, so...
Let's go on long enough. We need to do something. I agree.
Carla, is there any truth to her place of employment, a large automobile plant?
Um, that's what I've heard, but I can't get past security when I call. I call, I ask and security answers the phone and I ask for who the nuisance is and I get a voicemail and I don't return a call.
So, as far as, as far as getting the warrant, I mean, is that, nothing we can rely on with the local police force there to serve her?
If we...
Arresters should pay a fine and then, and then we have to arrest her.
Well, we would have to, we would have to know for sure that she's there.
Typically, a city warrant is only within the county.
Within our county.
Can we go statewide or anything or do we, does the city have that ability?
You have that ability depending on how your court, uh, addresses warrants. Generally, generally there'll be a standing order that'll, that'll indicate how far we're willing to extradite. So, yes, you can extradite from Kansas City, but you generally don't wanna have, have that in place for a speeding ticket because then you gotta go to Kansas City and pick up somebody to throw a warrant speeding ticket. So, I would suspect that your court probably has a standing order that they will only extradite within St. Genevieve County. I mean, that's, that's common practice for municipal violations because of the expense of it. And so, if somebody gets picked up on a warrant, say in North St. Louis, uh, they will, they may hold them or detain them briefly to confirm the warrant and then they'll find out, well, this is not extraditable where they're located and will just release the person possibly with a new court date or summons or just not even process it at all. They're just wanting to take the push and request it.
Where do we go from here? We're gonna go...
We're gonna declare the public nuisance.
Okay. So, I mean, do we have to have a motion?
Before we, before we do that, we're gonna find out how much money needs to get spent in order to implement, to follow up the public nuisance declaration and you can decide then whether that's what you wanna do.
Do we, do we inspect the roof also? I'm just curious.
Well, again, we, we have to act to mitigate a public nuisance. And, and so, everything that we're gonna do has to be tied to some problem for the general public that we're, we're, we're eliminating. If the roof leaks, the roof leaks.
Well, and if there's holes which you're allowing critters...
The hole issue, we'll have to board up, we'll board up the holes.
Right.
We'll put downspouts on it. We'll replace any fascia or exterior lumber that it needs to be replaced and we'll paint it, clean up the yard.
So, we know it's structurally sound now?
Uh, to the extent you can tell from the outside, there's no, it doesn't appear to be, which you have, we, since we haven't been in it, we really can't say.
So, theoretically though, this could go on like this for years?
I mean, we could... Oh, yeah, I mean, there, there are other municipalities that have dilapidated buildings in the state, many of them.
But we would just go back in and keep declaring a nuisance?
Oh, as far as, yeah, I mean, if, if you, if you fix, I thought you just meant, can you not take action? You can not take action.
No, right.
But if you take, take action, yeah, it can get dilapidated again. I mean, uh, usually at some point they stop paying taxes on it and there's a tax sale on it. Or, or a neighbor will get involved. See, and neighbors are a little bit, can be, are a little more, can be a little more aggressive about it because they can file a lawsuit, declare a nuisance, have a, have a, a trial. If it's a nuisance, get a monetary judgment, then they can do an execution on that monetary judgment and, and sell the house. Sell the real estate in pursuit of the civil judgment. And so...
What's the level of proof on that?
Just a pronunciations.
Pronunciations?
Just pronunciations, more like if there's a nuisance. Just a probarance, more like, you know, if there's a nuisance.
I mean, Sam might be more interested in doing that.
I mean, if we're, if we're next door to my house, I would have done it.
I didn't know, nobody advised him that that was an option. Yeah, I didn't know it was an option.
Assuming it's a nuisance to.
Because you gotta restate it.
His property, that there's, especially with a water runoff, if the water is being redirected from its natural flow and causing some sort of damage to his property, he's got a, he's got a claim, and he's got to establish what the damages are.
He filed suit in circuit court?
Yeah, that's correct. I'll handle it more than on a commercial scale, you know, usually, it's like a development.
And assuming the court agrees with him, they give him a judgment, and she pays or fails to pay the judgment, and he can perfect, he can acquire title of the property, and do whatever he wants to do with it.
That's right.
You have an option to offer.
The biggest, the best idea is for him to contact attorney about what he can do about it, signal too, and the city can do our side of it, but we're not, we're, the city's never, should never be in a position where we're beautifying property, so that's why I was questioning with painting, I mean, how, what are we, what are we gonna paint? We should really only paint those portions that are chipping paint, and not doing, like, if it's just a problem on one side, we should be painting, or corners should make it look beautiful, because it's not what the tax payers should use for, it's just to curb the nuisance. So, in total, maybe not the solution that's.
So, if I had an individual, a citizen, that wanted to pay to do that, that would be okay? It's not, like, if I have a citizen that wants to pay to have somebody paint that house?
If she, if the owner consents to having worked on her home.
But we can't get her consent.
So, what if it, where?
Everybody can go on there and help her out.
Okay.
But, but if it's police power, it has to pursue it to declare a nuisance, and the city has to do it. Either by the city or by a contractor of the city. Because we have, you have no right as an individual to go on somebody else's property, absence of, you know, so the city is using its police power to forcibly go on somebody's property.
To accept a donation.
The city can do it, or the city can contract with people, and of course, anybody can voluntarily pay more taxes than their, than their, than their.
How to tax.
But, you know what I'm saying, you can make a donation to a city.
Dedicated to that purpose. But regardless.
Yes.
Our limit is going to be.
To abate the nuisance.
To abate the nuisance, even if somebody wants to give us money, but doesn't give us the right to do more than abate the nuisance.
Correct, that's correct.
We're talking more about that.
It's a.
Thanks for that short report, Carla.
Thanks. Thanks, Carla. Kenny, glad you were able to make it, I knew you were supposed to be at some overtime work, so.
Yeah, I snuck out just in time to get out of here.
Good to have you here, buddy.
Should have a report in front of you. The biggest things I would talk about tonight would be personnel, as you saw, I did put one guy on, and within a week, he already was on his first structure fire, and for what it means, he's hooked, he's a good, I do have a couple other ones that I'm working with, one of which moved into the community back in December, and I asked him to give me six months to make sure he stays established, he's a young kid, I want to make sure he gets established himself before we go out and spend thousands of dollars to get him trained and equipment and everything. Also have on there, we had our annual awards supper, and we gave Felix Meyer a pin for 35 years of service to the community, and this year, with the firefighter of the year, I tried something new, and years gone by, as fire chief, I just picked somebody that I thought was a worthy applicant. This year, to get the guys more involved in it, I had the firemen vote on who they thought was the appropriate choice for firefighter of the year, and we chose Charlie Webmeyer. Charlie's got almost 40 years with the fire department, and he takes care of the majority of our mechanic work that we can do, and maintenance, and he's always there, so, he was a very worthy candidate. And our firefighter of the month this month on Facebook is Owen Roth.
That's great.
Open to any questions, or?
Kenny, thank you so much.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Kenny. Any committee reports? Joe, planning his own.
We'll get to that.
Public comments, now's the time, anybody in the gallery like to make a public comment? Sure, will come up to the podium, please?
I'm Mike Arouzi, I live at 555 North Third Street, the historic brewery building. I wanted to voice concern about a city's investment in a county project for a water park, and to address some misconceptions that, that I believe are misconceptions, but certainly, some things that require some, a greater level of investigation, just to give you some background, I'm the director of business intelligence and analytics for St. Louis Children's Hospital, so data is kind of my thing, and my biggest concern is that we're about to, as a city, accept some payments for a water tower that is going to support a water park that nobody voted for. That's the first misconception, people say, well, everybody voted for the water park. Nobody voted for a water park, people voted to increase taxes to go to the community center. Community center on social media mentioned that we're gonna build you a water park, and I honestly believe they intend to do that, but they're doing that without any investigation as to the feasibility of how much money it's gonna bring in, how many tickets they're gonna sell, I hear 50,000 tickets a year, that's 500 a day for the 100 days that they plan on being open. For a $10 million water park, and it's gonna bring tourism to St. Genevieve, there are six water parks within 60 miles of St. Genevieve, and they all had a construction budget of more than $10 million. So, we're not gonna get, I believe, we are not gonna get tourists, so that would rely on St. Genevieve County residents, and to support 50,000 a year, every single resident age 0 to 100 in St. Genevieve County would have to attend that water park every single month they're open. I don't think that's gonna happen, but prove me wrong. I would like, before we make a $1.4 million investment in a water tower, and I understand that the water tower is needed there for other purposes.
Just note that, that it's needed for other purposes.
Right, but a $1.4 million water tower is not. A $1.4 million water tower is needed to support a water park. So, what's the cost of the water tower that's needed to support the current infrastructure there, and maybe planned infrastructure that would take the same footprint of acreage that doesn't use the kind of water a water park does, but maybe flushes the toilets for workers? It's not a $1.4 million water, or $1.4 million water tower.
We don't know what the cost is gonna be yet, so we're.
And that's why we shouldn't agree to pay for it, until we know what the water, what the cost is going to be.
I see.
So, this number of 50,000 tickets a year, I'd like to see some data, prove that number, show me that it really is a good idea, or that it will attract tourism. Do a real feasibility study, the feasibility study that the county commissioners are telling us was done, is not a feasibility study. If they had done a feasibility study, they would have known then, that they didn't have enough water to support it. A feasibility study addresses the engineering concerns of a water park, the market of ticket sales for a water park, its competition, where people will come from to buy those tickets, that's what a feasibility study was. All they did was ask a design firm for a schematic design, a firm that designs water parks. If you're asking them if it's a good idea to build a water park, guess what their answer is gonna be? It's like asking a used car salesman whether or not you need a new car today. Their answer's gonna be yes. So, all I am asking for is require a larger set of data, a larger convincing argument that this is a good idea, before the city starts putting their money that we don't have into this kind of an infrastructure project. That's all I ask, so don't approve it just yet, and require those people who really, really want it to prove that it's a good idea. That's all I have to say.
Did you address the commissioners, were you able to get, did you talk to the commissioners?
No, I haven't yet.
Okay, whether, you know, their meetings are Monday, they're there from 8:00 to noon, it's probably, for your schedule, not a very good time, but.
No, it's a terrible timing for public business, when the public can't go.
I see, but they do meet, and their, their doors are open, so, I encourage you to speak to them, the commissioners.
I will.
Okay, thank you, I appreciate it. Any other public comments? So, that will move on. Thank you again, Mike. Have a chance to look at the consent agenda.
I hope she approves.
All in favor?
Aye.
Very good. Right now, we're gonna open a public hearing at 6:50 to address the rezoning of the property, an R1 single-family residential district to an R2 general residential district, part of the United States Survey 219 in the city of St. Genevieve, Missouri, west side of St. Mary's Road.
I would like to enter into evidence the St. Genevieve Municipal Code, the St. Genevieve Comprehensive Plan, the planning and zoning recommendation of approval with a vote, a roll call vote of seven in favor, zero against, and one absent, and then the relevant staff reports and the application.
Somebody make a motion to accept the evidence.
I make a motion to accept the evidence as presented.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I believe that there are people here regarding this.
Why don't you outline the request, that they can come in?
So, the city was approached by Tyler Ryan and Matthew Clump about rezoning a 1.68 acre parcel on St. Mary's Road. The property is currently zoned, R1, single-family residential, they would like to have a, the parcel rezoned to R2, general residential, to allow for the potential of a higher resale value or more uses for the property. And, there, I believe Matt is here, Matt's here, if anyone has any questions for him.
What uses would be added beyond the R1?
So, in an R1, you can do some farming with the exclusion of livestock, single-family dwellings excluding mobile homes, two-family dwellings with a special use permit, and then there are group homes, churches, publicly owned parks, playgrounds, community buildings, public schools, home occupations, and then R2 allows for the same items that are available in R1, in addition to two-family dwellings, multiple family dwellings, and then there are some items that are with special use permit only for a medical clinic or office, rooming house or boarding house, religious institutions, hospital, nursing, convalescent homes, child daycares are in addition to that use. So, there, we're looking to have the property rezoned to allow for the additional uses if they chose to do that, or sell the property for a higher resale value for the addition of those other items. The access to the parcel is off of St. Mary's Road. I believe there used to be access from Lynn Drive, but it's since closed off, and it just drops off down the hill there, so the only access at this point in time is from St. Mary's Road.
The access on Lynn Drive there, though, is that still city property there? I'm sure it's not showing that it's any owner's, is that still?
The city owns the street to where the, yeah, to the property line there.
I'm sorry.
The street.
You were to reconstruct Lynn Drive. Is the right-of-way present to do that?
Only to their property line, and it's only.
You couldn't, you couldn't.
You couldn't, no. You couldn't bring it back down, no.
So, that's like the east end of Ridge Drive where there's like a guardrail, and we just get in?
Yes, yes.
So, at one time, there was a street that went down there, or is that what?
I.
No, no, there was never a street that went.
I think there was a path at one time.
There was a right-of-way, there, there used to be a right-of-way, or an easement that went through there, but then that was, they say that was abandoned years ago.
This is on the property that comes on.
And the, it wasn't even where that, yes, it was, the easement was.
So, if you could, come to the podium.
Carla, yeah, you have to come to the podium.
Sorry, identify yourself.
Hi, my name's Kim Bosler, I live at 411 St. Mary's Road, and the property you're discussing is adjacent to my property. I think the easement, what you're talking about where that on Lynn Drive, I don't remember, but it could have been before my time, the easement that I was aware of is next to my driveway, or it used to be, and it was abandoned long ago, and, and given over to both property owners. I think it's 12 feet or something, I would have to look at the, I don't know exactly how much, but I know there is a, a section of that property that belongs with that hillside, so they would be able to put, they'd be able to get up that way. It wouldn't be a street, but it would be, they own that. I get, the one question I have about this is, I talked to Carla, you know, earlier, because I apologize, I wasn't able to attend the last meeting, because I didn't get home from work in time, but to find out what exactly it was about. So, I understand the rezoning, but what I don't understand is how does that, does that have anything to do with, like, the Heritage Commission? You know, I know there's a lot of restrictions on what I can do with my property because of the historical significance and in the area that I live in, so if you rezoned this because they want to build an apartment, or they want to build something like that, doesn't the Heritage Commission have some say over what gets built on that property when it's right there in the, next to the heart of the historical district?
Well, I guess, I'm sorry to interrupt, but the public hearing is really not a situation where the board is, is to be answering questions, this is for the people who are gonna speak on the issue to present evidence or testimony of their statements with regard to what their concerns are, what they want to have happen, if that makes sense. As, it's not like a regular agenda item, it's a public hearing regarding this, this request, so, I, I think, I think you expressed your concern with that, I don't know if there's something else you want to say, but I don't want, it's not a agenda item where we go back and forth and we answer questions in public, so it's more, it's a hearing on the request, so it's really more for you to present information to the board.
I understand what you're saying, so what would be the avenue for me to have had my questions answered prior to making a decision on rezoning something that's right there next to my property when I didn't even know this was happening? How do I, how was I to be made aware of that?
Certainly, long before the, the hearing on the zoning request in front of the board.
But, I mean, how would that have taken place?
You would have, you know, contacted the staff of the city and asked those questions.
Yeah, I don't think you understand what I'm asking, how would I have even known this was going on?
Oh, did you not get a notice of the?
I got a notice that there was gonna be a meeting.
Yes.
And, yeah.
So, you would, you got a notice in advance of the planning and zoning meeting, so, so you, that's the time that you needed to find out.
At the planning and zoning meeting.
Prior to that meeting.
All right. All right, I understand what you're saying.
We addressed those concerns at the President's building meeting as well, which I guess we're gonna be talking about yet, aren't we?
Unfortunately, I work out of town, and, you know, I'm scheduled, my schedule's late through June, I can't just be here when I get a couple weeks' notice, so, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else has anything to say?
No.
Carla, I've got a question, I'm looking at the, the map here, and if I understand, I think, I know where this is, I see the butcher shop there, so we're talking about the property, can I go over there and point to the thing?
This property that comes around back behind the butcher shop.
Yes.
How big of a little strip of this road? How big of a little strip of this road access is here? Is that enough to allow some kind of street to come back here? And isn't this, if my memory serves me correctly, like a really big hill? So what, what kind of construction would even be possible on that area?
Well, it would just depend on...
Would necessitate such a zoning change.
...proposing to do with it.
Right.
There are different requirements for access based on the intensity of use. So if they were subdividing, as an example, and creating an access road to a subdivision, you'd need a 50-foot entrance road. But if you're doing a commercial development, you might only need 30 feet. So you just don't know until somebody tells you what it is they want to do.
On the, on the plat map, it shows that it's about a little over 15 feet of the access there. So this one's shown. Unless that's not...
It's 15 feet, and there's another dot there.
Oh, I see that here.
Yeah, right there.
Right there on the other side.
So that's a, that's a 30-foot strip. Apartments, that would be the thing. That's the main difference. I mean, you're not going to put a hospital back there. Rebuild the water slide.
Yeah.
It is, that is steep. You'd have to be, turn around apartments.
Where is our applicant?
I'm right here.
Do you like to speak on this issue?
Hi, good evening.
Evening. You did it by yourself.
Sorry, my name is Matt Clump. I'm the current owner of that property, so. I'm basically here just to ask beauty grant to change from R1 to R2. Our thought was when we bought the property is to put apartments on it. I think it plays well for apartments with, it's the way the design we have in our head is, uh, split-level apartments would work well in that piece. So that was our thought. We're not sure we're going to do it right now, don't know if we're going to tackle that or not, but while we're waiting, we thought it might just move forward with that plan. I don't think it's going to hurt the value of anybody's property around it or anything like that, so we're basically just going from R1 to R2. I didn't think it was a big issue, so.
I have a question for Marlon.
Sure.
I think this is what Kim was kind of hitting at. If a new structure is built in the historic district, what guidelines do they have to follow? They can just build any new structure, or does it have to be of historical significance?
No, it can be a new structure. It's basically, you look at the minimum guidelines for a new structure in the design guidelines because it's in the historic district. So there would be some type of a guideline for it to follow, but it wouldn't be of the stringent nature of a historic house.
It operated, incisioned for the heritage reasons, whether it preserves the character of the district. So whatever architectural style would be reviewed based on the extent to which it's consistent with the character of the district. Is it innovative historically?
It is, just the edge of it is.
Given all the setback requirements and the size of that piece of property, I guess one question comes to mind, how many units could be built there?
Oh, I don't know. Without having to, I, it would depend on the size of the units, it would depend on how many they were looking to put there. We'd have to figure out parking areas and heights and all of that.
Because isn't there a square footage? The lot has to be of such square footage for each unit?
It's for... For the type of building. You can have a certain, there are height and area regulations for the size of the lot, and there are setbacks have to be, have to be looked at as well.
Did we, did we hear anything from William and Kathy Klug?
William's here.
And I, like Kim, I have concerns about, about the property values too, and the historical part of it, but also...
Sir, you state your name, please.
Oh, William Klug, St. Mary's Road. If you build an apartment section up there and you're going to be concreting or putting blacktop down there, then you're going to have a problem with runoff. And that runoff's going to come right onto my property from where I'm, because I live right below where that property is. And, and there's a tremendous amount of rain that comes off that hillside now. A couple of weeks ago, when we had that tremendous rain, it was like a river running off of that hillside between mine and Kim's property. I mean, it, there was water flowing across, across the street that was that deep. So that's, that's another concern, is going to be runoff. So it's, you know, there's a lot of variables that's in there, so it's just something to think about.
I think we have to think about all these things, and I'm sure that's where the city has some opportunities here to end construction if we're going to do that, to address runoff, where in the past maybe we haven't, but, you know, with storm drains and drainies like that, I think that that will be addressed. I'm sure that'll be addressed with any contractor that does any building in the city, you know, so.
Wouldn't that have to be addressed far in the design approval?
Right, that would all be in consideration.
Correct me if I'm wrong, but when you get a building permit, there's, you have to spell out how you're going to deal with the water.
Stormwater and everything, parking lot.
You know.
You know, those issues aren't really for you now.
Right, right.
Because this is not a building permit.
Exactly.
This is just whether or not the zoning change would be appropriate under the plans for the city in that area, whether it's appropriate with regard to labor and property, the current existing area property.
And the commission adheres that, that it was okay? Everything else around that is R1?
It's R1. Kim's house is R2. That one is R1. Your R1.
Is that because of the packing house next door?
No, that's R1 also.
Mine's R2.
Yours is R2.
And the Jim Baker's house is on the other side of Ms. Bosler's?
Yeah, Jim Baker's on the other side of me.
He's R2.
He's R2 as well. Now, now, the property that's on the other side of the packing house, now, that, that property used to belong to Larry Marler, and I don't know if that property was sold off and the person that's living in there now owns it or what, but that, that property goes all the way up the hillside, just like, like that, you know, that's full of trees, so, I mean, I don't know, I don't know who owns it. All right, nobody else to speak, we'll close the public hearing at 7:09. Are there any motion to, no? Oh, okay. Very good. That will move on to old business. Bill number 4210, An Ordinance of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri Authorizing the Mayor to Enter Into an Agreement Between the City of St. Genevieve and the St. Genevieve Municipal Ban. This will be our second reading. Need a roll call vote?
Alderman Grimmonter?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
I'm going to abstain.
Does he need to state a reason why he's abstaining? Okay. Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers? Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Six jazz, zero nose, one absent, one abstention. Bill number 4210 now becomes ordinance 4142.
Thank you. Under new business, we have bill number 4211, An Ordinance Allowing the 2018 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to Apply to the Local Sales Tax of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri between April 19th and April 25th of 2018. First reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Look at the motion, we're going to need a second reading on this.
Move for a second read.
Second.
All right, all in favor?
Aye.
So it's an ordinance allowing the 2018 Show Me Green Sales Tax Holiday to apply to the local sales tax of the City of St. Genevieve, Missouri between April 19th and April 25th of 2018. Need a roll call?
Motion approved.
Motion approved.
Motion to approve.
Now, I don't need a roll call, sorry about that.
Alderman Ruzika?
Yes.
Alderman Prince?
Yes.
Alderman Stupi?
Yes.
Alderman Jokers?
Yes.
Alderman Donovan?
Yes.
Alderman Mooney?
Yes.
Alderman Grimmonter?
Yes.
Seven yes, zero no's, one absent. Bill number 4211 now becomes ordinance 4143.
Thank you. Now, the first reading of bill number 4212, An Ordinance Approving a Zone Change From An R1 Single Family Residential Zoning District to an R2 General Residential Zoning District for Part of Survey 219.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
No.
Motion carried. Takes us to other business. Bob? Concerning the open burning?
I'd like to make a motion that we start open burning immediately.
When will it end?
June 1st.
I don't want to get a wheel under you in March, and it's very windy. Just saying.
Well, now's the time to, I mean, we've done it every other year. Yeah, we always do that. Property cleanup.
Well, in the past, you just did it when you wanted to do it for the period of time that you wanted to do it, and the city attorney pointed out to us that it didn't, couldn't just kind of waver, wand over the code and forgive people from complying with the code, so we adopted an ordinance that said in March, you will set a period.
Okay.
So you get to set it for however you want, and you get to do it again and deliver.
Then you use your discretion, I know that there's, it gets dry, we have the advisories against it, wind, you know, so.
Well, that can be, you, the mayor has the power to rescind that for emergency conditions, right?
You still have a wind requirement that you're not supposed to do it.
You still have to abide by what's stated on the, and it states that you can't burn if the winds are in excess of a certain mile per hour, so.
10 mile an hour.
So that's already factored into it then?
Okay. So I had it first.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried.
Thank you. Then I have any other things to address here?
Motion to adjourn.
I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you all very much tonight.